Let's start our meeting, we'll begin with the pledge. The pledge is to flag on the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. And please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Here.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Here.
Mayor Casper?
Here. Item number three is Privilege of the Floor. Is there anyone here who wishes to be our Privilege of the Floor? Seeing not at close Privilege of the Floor, and move on to item number four, which is a recognition of Bud Harvey's 90th birthday. So, it was shocking to me that someone asked me, "Who's Bud Harvey?" If you don't know Bud Harvey is our longest, is he our longest-serving volunteer?
Right now he isn't.
Yep. And also a benefactor of the village. So Bud now unfortunately is in Baptist retirement. This Sunday marks his 90th birthday, and this year marks his 65th year as a volunteer for Village of Scotia.
Yeah, don't say unfortunate either, because he was falling down when he was at home, but he's not there.
So he's getting, yeah, he's getting better here, then good for him. But, you know, he was a stapler on the village, and any time I ran into Bud, he'd take a minute to tell me what was good about the village, what was good about the government, what was good about the fire department, and he was always a supporter, and he supported us in a lot of ways. I mean, he bought a number of different things for the fire department, he paid for the decorative lighting that was outside the, that's outside Village Hall here, so he was just always a supporter. So I just want to read what the chief, the fire chief wrote about Bud to all of you, so that you can hear the chief's work, because like, he knows it much better than me. Says, "Mayor, I'd like to honor Arthur Bud Harvey, a former resident of 115 Alexander Avenue in the village, now residing at the Baptist Retirement Center. This year Bud will be celebrating two milestones, the first being his 90th birthday on April 17th, 2016, the second is his 65, 65th anniversary as a member of this department. Bud is a lifelong resident of this village and a proud Army veteran of World War II. He has served in the fire service as a county fire coordinator and with the Scotia Fire Department, going up through the ranks to Assistant Chief. Bud has also been the department historian for many years. Bud is never at loss for words when it comes to the Scotia Fire Department. He has passed, he has passed many a story to all of us over the years. His pride in this department is very evident, and he still smiles and gets a gleam in his eyes when we talk about the news involving our department. He used to be a daily fixture around the firehouse. He and his close friend Stella would be at all of our major calls, taking pictures and offering whatever assistance they could. Whenever he would take leave of us, he would say, 'You guys be careful. We salute Arthur Bud Harvey for his dedication and commitment to the Scotia Fire Department and to the Village of Scotia.' Son and all these." So I just want to, I'm gonna pass that on to Bud. He's got a birthday party this Sunday at Baptist, and I was trying to think, what can we do for him? So, the highest honor that in my administration has been to name someone a patron of the village, we've already done that for Bud. He's, he's been recognized several times, and so I was going through thinking, what, what, you know, what can I do that was significant or meaningful? And, well, what I remembered was that a previous administration at one point had keys to the Village of Scotia. And there's one left. So for Bud's 90th birthday and recognition of his 65th anniversary as a volunteer for the Scotia Fire Department, I'm gonna present him the key to the Village of Scotia. So I'll do that on Sunday. Okay, item number five is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, and do they all have their packet? Okay. So if you're indulged, man, you know you've already heard this budget, we've already had the discussions, and just, just for the audience and for any of the, of the people at the Ds here, I'm gonna go through this overview. We'll open the public hearing, see if anybody wishes to be heard on it, we'll close the public hearing. I'll ask for a motion to adopt this as the budget for fiscal year 2016 to 2017. Once we have a motion and a second, if there's anyone who cares to make comments or move for amendment to it, we'll do that, and then at the end of that part, we'll go through it out. So, if you take a look at the first sheet that I have in the packet for you guys, you can see that they're, just showing the distance, difference between 1516 and 1617. For 16 to 17, in the A Fund, we're projecting that to run the village for this coming fiscal year. It'll be $6,841,487, which is an increase of 1.24% over last year. To offset that cost, the non-tax revenues that we're projecting are $1,974,281, which is 1.67% greater than last year, which I think in this economic climate, to show an increase in your revenues is, you know, a pretty good market. This year we're using $300,000 in our, from our fund balance, last year we used $275,000. We were able to replace that $275,000 that we used last year, and we're just projecting we'll be able to replace $300,000 in this year's budget and not drain down our fund balance. Which means then that the amount we have to raise in taxes to offset the cost of running the village, and the revenues that will support that, is $4,567,206, which is an increase in net levy of 0.59%, which is what our tax cap was. The net assessed value of the village this year is $367,136,059, that's up by 23%, which is a good sign for us, and, excuse me? Like, 0.2, I'm sorry, 0.23%, which is not as good as 23%. I was, I will say in my, in my conversation with Bill Portell that I was telling you about earlier, he says we're gonna, we'll see an increase in our assessed value in the village for next year due to some improvements that were made in the village that haven't come on this tax roll, so we can look forward to that. But with that, assessed value divided into the cost of running the village, that gives us a rate of $12.44 per thousand, which is an increase in the rate of 0.36%. So the next page is just some good things we're either to keep in the budget or add to the management of our village. So happy to say that all of the funded functioning programs, the programs that we actually have to put money into were kept, the sidewalk program, summer recreation program, the Flint, programs at the Flint House and the community garden, those all survived. As you saw in the budget, there's the beginning of the equipment replacement program and fire, the CBA bottles and the masks and the turnout gear that we never had before. We're adding boat metal program. In this budget, there's the Safe Roots to Schools Initiative, which is the sidewalks on Seymour Horn and Allen Al Marlowe. And then the, or the, in the F Fund, the well maintenance for wells one and two. So, next couple pages kind of just show the history, the financial history of what we've been going through with this financial downturn, and kind of proud of the people that do the finances in this village, because we're, we're surviving well. So if you look at this page, it shows our expenses, steady increases in expenses, which you have to expect, between labor, health, care, retirement, all of those, we know those costs are going up, so we see that steady increase. We're also still seeing a less dramatic, but steady increase in our revenues, and those are, that's money we take in other than taxes to hustle around the village. And I think to see an increase in those revenues really speaks volumes for the quality of the work that our financial people in this village are doing. Myself excluded. Next page shows our healthcare costs, and, so the blue line is our actual healthcare for our employees, and you can see the steady increase that everybody else has had to deal with. That sudden decrease in 2015 marks when we went from the old co-pay program to the high deductible program. Our costs decreased significantly there, but are now moving back up because of our renewals and some of the effects that Obamacare is having on us now. The Medicare program is what our retirees enroll in at age 65, and fortunately for that, there's expenses up and downs, but it's remained relatively constant. Retirement system, contributions to our retirement system. The reason I had that on there is because you see it peaked in 2015 after the disastrous collapse of the stock market, where the state retirement system basically lost all its money in the stock market, and then passed on that financial burden to the municipalities. You see that sharp and dramatic rise. It looks like we're, we made it past it all. So our costs are going down now, as the stock market has gotten better and the state has replenished its own fund, they're starting to take some of that burden back off of us, so we'll hope that that continues. And then this is, the next graph just shows you what we all dealt with regarding building this budget and trying to stay within the 2% tax gap. It's the simplest graph you could possibly look at, but what it illustrates is the fact that our fixed contractual costs are 80% of our budget. The ones that we actually control are, I don't know if you want to call them discretionary costs, where we could maybe do less or buy less of certain things, is only 16% of our budget. And then finally, this is the one I'd like to ask the trustees to fully put in their wallet when somebody says, says to you, "What do my taxes pay for?" If your home is assessed at the average of $125,000 here in the Village of Scotia, at $12,044 cents per thousand, that shows you exactly how much of the tax bill that you pay goes to each of the segments of the operation of this village. So if somebody says, "What do my taxes pay for?", you can show them exactly what their tax bill paid for if their house was assessed at $125,000. So, at that point, I'm gonna leave the public hearing for fiscal budget for, budget for fiscal year 2016 and 2017, as if anyone here appears to be heard, the village budget for fiscal year 2016 to 2017. Seeing not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt the executive budget as the actual budget for 2016 and 2017.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. And any discussion?
Yes, actually, I'd like to commend all the department heads for doing an excellent job in staying under the tax gap. With that being said, there's some concerns I do have. I know in the past, the fund balance has been replenished, but I'm concerned that we're using the fund balance. I equated to, you know, paying my mortgage with my savings account, and that concerns me. Also too, for the last meeting, which is already in the minutes, and I've kind of toyed with bringing up those again, but I don't believe I can probably get a second motion if you can hear those today. I'm concerned about increase of certain positions, salaries. I think in this time, although we were under the tax gap, which I do commend everybody for doing, I think we need to start looking at other avenues to drive more revenue in shared services going forward, due to the fact that we are one of the highest tax municipalities in the area. So, you know, in my vote today, we'll reflect that, so.
My, my one comment is that if the use of the fund balance were to lower our fund balance each year, if this didn't work what it has before the last 10 years of employment, if we started to drive our fund balance down, then I wouldn't be allocating that funds, but I'm confident that we'll, we'll.
Yeah, I have faith in you, Mayor, but it just, it concerns me seeing that, and it goes, it went up. I don't have the numbers for the previous year, but.
There's $275,000 last year?
I mean, the previous year, I'm sorry, I'm just, I have last year, the previous year for 2014, I was looking.
Yeah, $275,000 before that.
Okay. It's just concerning to me, that, that's.
Yep, it would be to me too, if it actually drew this in my fund balance diagram. Any other comments? Okay, so at this point, please call the roll.
Trusty Mathis?
No.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes. All right, so I want to thank the department heads and, and Oya in particular, and the rest of the staff in the clerk's office, because, you know, I get to be the mouthpiece for this, but the people that really run the finances of the village are the department heads and the clerk's office. I mean, they're here day to day, and that's what we pay them to, I think they do a great job. Item number six is Local Law 2016C to amend code relating to appearance tickets. So just as a reminder for everybody, this is the law where a code violator, once they have not complied with a citation by our code enforcement officer, can then be summoned with an appearance sticker rather than being served by an officer. Make it much more efficient for us and much more likely that we'll get that person served. So at this point, I'm gonna open up the public hearing to Local Law 2016C. Is there anybody who cares to be heard on that law? Seeing not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, accept it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trusty Mathis?
Yes.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Item number seven is Introduce Local Law 2016D to repeal Local Law 2016II, which authorized the property tax levy in excess of the 2% tax gap. Anybody care to move that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion on that one? Please call the roll.
Trusty Mathis?
Yes.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes. Item number eight is Introduce Local Law 2016E related to the Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code Record Keeping. Basically what this is, is the law that we talked about, the skinect that we had in place, so that when we put into place this compliance engine for the fire department, that the company's required to give us their records. Anybody care to move Local Law 2016?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? Please call the roll.
Trusty Mathis?
Yes.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes. And item number nine then is authorize me to sign the contract with Bricer LLC regarding the compliance engine. Leah did review the contract, and the one question that someone brought up, I can't remember who, was whether or not that data would be ours, should we not go with this company or whatever, and it is in the contract that we own the tab, so.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Please call the roll.
Trusty Mathis?
Yes.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes. Item number 10 is to authorize Andy Brick to negotiate.
Right, no, he's due.
For purchase of property?
Oh, okay, no, that's right, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna roll here, I haven't suited up yet, so. So I, I look at authorization to have Andy Brick to negotiate an option for the purchase of property.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trusty Mathis?
No.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes. Item number 11 is Resolution to authorize to waive the park used to be used for the Scotia Glenville Littling, the Scotia Glenville Bayruth, and the Glenville Indians, and these fee waivers would be in recognition of any kind of agreement signed by those parties to maintain the fields rather than the village doing it.
I'll move.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that one? Please call the roll.
Trusty Mathis?
Yes.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Zeman?
Yes.
Trusty Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes. Item number 12 is authorize a surplus of the 2002 Toro Groundmaster, which is a morgue, the Salco 810 wood chipper, which we're buying a new one, and the Tarko leaf boxes from DPW. Any care to authorize that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? We'll do it all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 13, these are insurance renewals, rather than explaining to our homes, so there's the MVP, which is our healthcare for our employees, the CDPHP Advantage Plan is for our retirees, correct?
Better medic, anyone who's Medicare, it's a supplemental Medicare plan.
Item 15 is the MetLife Dental Plan, which is the dental plan for our employees, so, and our renewal is June 1st, so this is just the renewal for each of those insurances that we have for employees. So item 13, authorize me to sign the renewal for the MVP Health Plan.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 14 is authorize me to sign the CDPHP Medicare Advantage Health Plan.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then item 15 is the renewal for our MetLife Dental Plan.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 16 is the MS4 Annual Report. Do I got one?
That does.
Yeah. Right, we all.
I would request you to drop it.
I think that, I would like to start a tradition. First I, first I thought that maybe the superintendent of public work should read this every year. Then I thought, well, maybe the newest trustee should read it every year. Yes, well, that's the reaction I got, so. Here we go, this must be read, so here we go. So, what's MCM stand for?
Minimum Control Measure.
Minimum Control Measure. So we have to take these measures in order to make sure that we meet the MS4 requirements. Minimum Control Measure number one is public education, and for that, stormwater pamphlets, handouts, and posters are available at the Village Clerk's Office, DPW Office, and the Building Department Office. And also, the Village Water Call, a report postcard was sent to all residents, and included a link to the village's MS4 program webpage. Control Measure number two, public involvement and participation. Number one, Collins Park and Freedom Park cleanup by the GE Scotia Glenville, by GE Scotia Glenville students and Timor Cable employees. And the after 4th of July fireworks cleanup had a total of 37 volunteers with six bags and 115 cubic yard dumpster garbage collectives. Number two, Skidnake County Water Quality Committee meetings, the village is represented at all 10 meetings this year. And item number three, the MS4 Annual Report is posted on the village website and available at the clerk's office for review and comment. Control Measure number three, illicit discharge and detection and elimination. All 23 stormwater outfalls have been mapped within the village, 10 were inspected for dry weather discharge and see if blues were being discharged, none were found. Control Measures four and five, construction site and post-construction control. Number one, during the program year, there was one new project that required SWPPP to be reviewed, which was a mazone project at 25 Mulholland Avenue. As a project distributed less than, disturbed, less than one acre, post-construction stormwater management quality and quantity controls were not required. Item number two, the village inspected five post-construction stormwater management practices that are owned by the village several times each year. Maintenance was performed as needed, including mowing of the lawn areas. Control number six, municipal operations. Number one, village employees continued, continue to be trained to implement best management practices to avoid stormwater pollution in their duties at the DPW garage and their field operations. 67% of the village DPW and Parks Department staff was trained this year. Number two, during the past year, village streets were swept five times each for a total of 130 miles clean and approximately 10 acres of parking lots swept. Catch pieces were inspected and cleaned as necessary for a total of approximately 25 cleanings. The Parks Department applied minimal amounts of fertilizer to help combat high phosphorus levels in Collins Lake. And that is the report.
This looks so bad, it's a wild one.
Item number 17, Mayor's comments to the board, we've already dispatched for that, so we'll move on. Item 18 is correspondence, liaison, special committee reports. Trusty Mathis?
Nothing to report.
Trusty Gifford?
Our department meeting was tomorrow. No, we had it, no, we had it last, I'm sorry. We had a fire department meeting. It was a little weird, because I went to a call during the middle of it and missed it, everything except the dinner, so that was good.
It's here, there for the most important part, right?
We had a planning board meeting where we reviewed the CVS and the motel. Interesting stuff for everybody. The CVS plan is, is not in the, it's not been presented for approval yet, but they've made quite a lot of progress with it. The one thing I'm particularly concerned with is their design, the way it stands now has more than 285 feet between the edge of CVS and the edge of Gabriel's, which is open streetscape, which, I mean, they'll put some trees in and stuff, but it won't, it's gonna look like a big hole, which our downtown plan doesn't, doesn't appreciate, so I don't know what's gonna happen with that.
When you say the edge of, just out of curiosity, so are you talking the edge of the proposed building?
The proposed building to Gabriel's.
To Gabriel's building?
Building.
Okay, so, okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, the, what you're looking at with streetscape is the open between buildings, so that's what the measure there are. It's about the same as the distance that, well, where McDonald's was, was 310 feet between the Dog Grooming Place and Dunkin' Donuts. So it's very much, very similar to that wide open chunk. It's 200 feet from the paint store to the Baptist Church. So anyway, that, that's the one thing that, the motel, they changed their plans somewhat, they're talking about doing a three-story instead of a four-story, which I think will be more reasonable, and they're, they've gotten their plans around, so a little more professional looking. We'll see what happens. Neither one goes up for final approval at all. And I would, do we have a forum for talking about the sewer project next door? I, I wanna give praise to the DPW there.
I'll do that right now.
Okay. Last week, when it rained so hard, the water started coming into the cellar and the fire station with mud and sewage, I guess, I don't know, was it sewage? Not much sewage, but mud, and made a big mess in the cellar. And we had our meeting, we were initially not gonna go down there because of the mud.
Jerry must be a little upset.
But then Andrew and crew dug a hole and found, it was a broken sewer pipe, right? That was, and they, they replaced it one day morning, and it's working fine. They, we had to change our plans a little bit, you know, I was, I took, picked up a paramedic at the hospital and had to sit there and wait while he ran and went to the potty before, because we couldn't go to here.
That was, that was one of the big things, I mean, you guys were in 24-hour shift and no bathroom, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And, what was it, three days, three pair?
Yeah, I mean, it happened Thursday afternoon, and they were back in, Tuesday morning it was.
So it was, it was not a small issue, it was a big issue. And the nice thing is I was able to use, I got a call from a reporter asking about, no, asking about cooperative services and stuff, and I said, yeah, give me an example right now, you know, we had some damage to our sewer system, we don't have a camera, the town does, we borrowed town's camera, and, you know, the point I was making is the people that actually work every day and do their job are the ones that know how to share these services the best, and how they do it at our ground level. Politicians are probably the worst people to figure out how shared service should work, it's the people that actually do it. And, you know, so I told her, I mean, we had a major, major water break at the intersection of Log Avenue 50, the town was immediately there with a truck and a couple of guys to help us, huh? It just, it works seamlessly when you let it work. So anyway, so nice job from you guys. Is that it, Tom? Trusty Zeman?
I'll make a report.
And Trusty Rizzo?
We had a Freedom Park meeting last month, and we're starting to put together a membership drive, who sent out pamphlets to try to get some more funding. drive, to send out pamphlets to try to get some more funding. We also had Memorial Day, this is the third meeting we had, the Memorial Day on Fort Yales, because of work, I missed the last two. We have a new chair, and she's really going hell on it, and she's really had a schedule, she's putting things together, getting very well organized. And we had our first car show meeting with John P., and we're getting things together for that. We started, we got an early start on that, so we're working on that too. We have another meeting scheduled for next month, and we're going to move along with that. So all the activities for the summer are moving along pretty good, and the car shows moving, the prays going on. We got a real good early start with the parade this year. Last year was kind of, we're like a month, month or two behind. This year, we're actually a month or two ahead.
You got a new crew.
We got a new crew, and they're really into it, so. And they did cancel the Freedom Park meeting for this week, but we'll have it rescheduled and let you know what's going on there. But we're starting to get organized with that, and like I said, the membership letters are going out, and that's all I have for reporting. The car show looks good with the Alps.
Have they got the order for good weather in for the car show early?
My mom said the road's going to have a close one. It's been, if anybody knows the car show, it's probably one of the biggest car shows in the capital area. We have over 200 cars every year. One year we had over 350. And, you know, it's one of the biggest car shows, and everybody looks forward to it. So we want to get a good jump on that and get things organized. And we're working together, providing, and Scotia Glenville Alps, and they're doing a lot of legwork with us, and together we're working very well. And it's coming along, so.
I just had one thing I wanted to add. You know, the cooperation between our, joining fire districts and our fire department, you know, is important. Volunteers are limited everywhere, and to have a crew in the, in the station when needed to respond as quickly as possible, even outside of our own village, is important for the safety of everybody around us as well. So I was approached by one of the commissioners from District 7. Apparently we had a fire on a curtain or something?
Yeah, to Tryman Avenue, which is a big adult care facility, so. A lamp had fallen down, a lot of smoke in the one apartment there and stuff, so.
So one of the, one of the commissioners from District 7 approached me just to say, well, she appreciated our guys coming out and helping out and stuff. So. Item 19, departmental reports. Anybody care to move that we accept those?
I move we accept the departmental reports with our thanks, we did a good job this month.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 20, the auto claims.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Please call it off.
Trustee Mathis?
Yes.
Trustee Gifford?
Yes.
Trustee Zina?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes.
Item number 21 is the approval of the minutes of the March 1st special meeting of trustees.
Question, didn't we re- approve these minutes in the last one first? Probably didn't. Because this was the one I wasn't here for, and I ended up staying last night.
I'm going to stay again.
I'm going to have to stay again. Make it look like I wasn't here twice.
So I have a motion? Anybody?
I'm...
Second?
I'm second.
Usually it's the new guy supposed to move it. This never works. I tried to do it a few times. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Second.
Item 22, approval of the minutes of the March 9th regular meeting of trustees.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Maria, you've got Denemyers still with his name backwards again.
Every single time.
Denemyers is his first one, right? I think I started that.
It's not anymore, let's change it.
I wish I could let Maria take a hit on that, although I think I'm going to start this.
Thank you.
Okay, with that amendment?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 23, approval of the minutes of the March 15th special meeting of trustees.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 24 is the minutes of the March 16th special meeting of the trustees.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And item 25, the approval of the minutes of the March 22nd special meeting of trustees.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in... Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 26, new business. Is there any new business anybody wants to bring up? You'll be happy to know that I only had two items.
The polls are coming, I'll see that with numbers, please.
Yeah, yeah. I know they do calls regularly, and they're techneating out as they're cutting them pieces and piling off and taking away, sorry. Number one, I'm looking for authorization to, I think it's under motion sheet, is it on the front of there? Nope. Nope, okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the refund of an overpaid water bill, water sewer bill, by Coginos in the industrial park. So the calculation of their bill was incorrect, they had two meters and an affluent meter, so blending those together, the calculation was incorrect, and the result was they overpaid their bill. So, we have a Donald Engineering actually go through it to make sure the calculation was correct, and the result of that and some other things are, we'll be adopting a new policy for the way that we read those meters to make sure that this could never happen again. But at this point, I just want authorization to give them their refund. What was the refund about?
That was our error, right?
Yes, it was our error.
Yeah, it's all a motion.
I don't think Glenville would be happy if we didn't.
We're not growing for you.
Got a motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I think we should call it all on this.
Trustee Mathis?
Yes.
Trustee Gifford?
Yes.
Trustee Zina?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Casper?
Yes. And then, the other one I just forgot to put on the, on the agenda, I talked to you about the fee schedule for the boat rentals. And one thing that Jimmy corrected me on, I want to make sure you understand, so the proposed fee is for residents, $5 for kayaks, canoes, and the water bikes, $10 for non-residents. Now, the proposal is $5 an hour for a maximum of four hours for the canoes, and a maximum of two hours for the water bikes. So I want to make sure that's clear, because it's not what it said.
No, that wasn't what you said before. You said for four hours.
Yeah, I had it, it's $5 for four hours. It's $5 per hour?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's what they charge at Moro State Park. When it hit the paper, it was $5 for four hours. When Jim was over at, over at Goldstock's, they said, I got to tell you, you're not charging enough for those boats. So, so there was a misunderstanding there. So the proposal is $5 an hour, a maximum rental period of four hours, so somebody can't huddle boat all day on the lake, and a maximum rental period of two hours for the hyperbike.
Is there a minimum? There's no minimum rental period?
Well, it'd be one hour.
Okay.
For five bucks.
Not two hours?
Two hours for $10.
Make them hours, I know. Make the minimum a little higher.
We always get it in.